Of the Richland School District Two Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available publicly. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I move to approve the July 9th, 2024 regular board meeting agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Lindsey Agostini and seconded by Nikki Porter to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Yes. Okay, we will take a hand vote. Those in favor? Ms. Washington?
I'm voting in favor.
Thank you. And Ms. Washington is joining us via the telephone tonight. The vote is six yes, zero no. The motion passes. Thank you. To item 3.1, Executive Session, may I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Nash.
I move to convene an Executive Session for the purpose of discussing personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation and contract modifications, receipt of legal advice regarding a proposed litigation settlement, contractual matter regarding the purchase of a property, and employment recommendations and certified releases.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mrs. Agostini to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote, and we'll take a hand vote.
It's a yes for me.
Thank you. I didn't. I said, "Vote." Well, we're taking a vote, so I need to see hands first. Those who are in favor? Was that? Okay. That's seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. The board will now enter into Executive Session. May I have a motion to end Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I move that we end Executive Session at 6:20 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Agostini and seconded by Mr. Trapp to end Executive Session at 6:20 and resume public session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Mrs. Washington is joining us via telephone.
No, she's not. As much as she...
Ms. Agostini? Okay, thank you. I was just informed that she will not be joining us on this part, but she was a part of the Executive Session. Thank you. Are we waiting on any board members? Mrs. Nash? The vote is six yes, zero no. We will move to Inspirational Moment, but we're going to wait for that. I was just informed as well that they are running about five minutes behind, so we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda. We will now move to item 5.1. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the Consent Agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Nash.
Madam Chairwoman, I move to approve the Consent Agenda for the July 9th, 2024 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no. The vote passes. Now we move to item 5.2. Approval of Minutes from Previous Meeting. We will now move to item 5.2. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting?
Madam Chair.
That's already been approved. Okay, so why is that? Let's move to 6.1. That's a little more exciting. Let's move to 6.1. 6.1 is the Special Recognition. The agenda item in this section is Special Recognition for the 2023-2024 Board Officers in appreciation of your dedication and services from June 2023 to June 2024 as Board Chairman and Vice Chairman of the Richland School District Two Board, as well as the Secretary, although Mrs. Washington is not present with us today. I would like to present you with the plat. May I have Mrs. Nash and Mr. Trapp to please join me in the front, along with all of the board members? If you guys can please give them a round of applause for their leadership, please. We're going to move to 7.1, Public Participation. We will now move to Public Participation. We have two individuals who have signed up to address the school board. You will be given each three minutes to address the board. To assist with timing, the lights on the table in front of me will change colors from green to yellow to red. When you have 30 seconds remaining, the light will turn yellow. When your time is up, the light will turn red, and you will hear the tone indicating your time to speak has expired. Before we begin, I do want to remind all of you that our meetings are streamed live and recorded. According to policy B-E-D-H, comments from the public should not include gossip, should not include gossip, defamatory words, or abusive language. The policy also prohibits in public session any expression of personal complaints about individual school personnel or any other person connected with school system. Specific student or personnel issues should be handled through the appropriate procedure as indicated in the district policy. Questions asked during public participation will be referred to a staff member for a response at a later time. With that being said, the first person is Angela Vandelay.
Hello, my name is Angela Vandelay. I'm a parent of two current or former Richland Two students, and I'm here today to talk about the magnet programs at Richland Northeast. I actually was hoping I could talk after two other people who are supposed to talk tonight, so I'm not sure why you only have two total names, but the reason I wanted to talk last is because my son was at Richland Northeast five years ago, and that was following Pontiac Elementary, Pontiac Montessori, both of my children went to, was very happy with that program. They both went to TLC at Dent, extremely happy with that program, and when my son started at Richland Northeast, I thought that it was going to be a perfect fit.
Madam Chair.
I just wanted to give a friendly reminder that we're not supposed to name schools or personnel, correct, during this time?
Yes, but the schools, okay, we'll just move forward.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Is everything okay?
Yes.
Okay. So when he started at Richland Northeast, we were very optimistic that the arts program, the academic program, and the journalism program were going to be a great fit for him as a musician that he was and is. But even before school started, we were disappointed that the field trip that was supposed to happen before school started, we just never heard anything about, and of course, it didn't happen. It continued to, we continued to be disappointed with the way things were going as the semester started, and at that point, I'm not sure who initiated it, but there was a brainstorm session of parents and, I believe, administrators to look at, you know, what was going on with the magnet program. The academic program, I believe, was the focus, and I believe that it started using the incubator that R2I2 has to help solve problems in the district. I even set up a meeting with one of the teachers to express my concerns and find out, you know, how things could go, and she actually broke down in tears at the time, while meeting with me, who she'd never met before. She knew my son, of course, because she'd been in that magnet program since it started, and she saw how it was no longer what it used to be. So after that semester, we made the difficult decision to transfer our son from Richland Northeast to Spring Valley, which was our zone school, and I just wanted you to know that the things that you're going to hear about today didn't start recently. This has been going on for five years or more, and I just want you to understand that the leadership of the magnet programs needs help. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we will have Lillian Makrovich, and I do apologize if I mispronounce your name.
It's all right. Can I go ahead and speak?
Yes, you may.
Good evening to Richland Two School Board, Superintendent Moore, and other attendees. My name is Lillian, and I'm a rising 12th grader at Richland Northeast High School. I know that you're aware of the recent efforts from both students and parents regarding the issues with communication and magnets at RNE. The purpose for Richland Two's magnet programs is to maximize students' potential and growth. I participate in three magnet programs at RNE: Horizon, Cavplex, and Palmetto Center for the Arts, because, like many students at RNE, I want to take advantage of what opportunities my school offers. I wanted to voice a student's perspective and ask for your continued attention to the school. I would argue that it is imperative for RNE to have a thriving academic magnet program, a program that allows students to have a rigorous learning environment and supportive community, which RNE has lacked during my time in high school. RNE should be able to attract highly motivated learners from across the district, and these learners need to have confidence that they can trust RNE with the important task of guiding and nurturing their learning. A year and a half ago, IB was eliminated throughout the district, and a plan was not in place to reimagine the Horizon IB program at RNE. There was little to no action or communication from either the school or district, even after students and parents voiced concerns at the school level. Since these concerns were escalated to the district level, some action has begun over the summer to help improve the program. Students were promised to be included in the redevelopment of Horizon over the past year, but we have been overlooked, and this did not happen. Students deeply care about their education and need to be a part of the process to rebuild a positive school community. I want the district and the school to understand that it will take time to build trust with families again. This has been a difficult and uncertain time, but trust can be built through planning, commitment, communication, and follow-through. Students only get one chance to have an incredible high school experience. I realize that it is too late for students in my grade to experience all of the potential that RNE has to offer, but I have two brothers that are coming in behind me. The time is now to prepare the way for their growth and the development of their potential. I would encourage Richland Two's leadership to have regular updates about the program and its process. RNE needs a cohesive plan in place for the direction of Horizon, RNE's academic magnet program, with accountability for those in charge. I thank you for my time.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Porter, are we ready for Inspirational Moment?
Madam Chair, I think that Ms. Vandelay said... Did you get a confirmation?
Ms. Agostini, you're out of order.
No, I thought that there was somebody else that signed up for public participation and that they were overlooked in some capacity. I'm just checking to see.
No, but that's not how you check. You know better.
I'm asking you.
Right, but I think you were pointing out they're asking, and there are only two names on my list, so if they were overlooked, I do apologize, but Mrs. Washington only gave me two names. Is that correct? Thank you so much. We'll continue. Mrs. Porter, I will go back to you. We're going back to 4.1, Inspirational Moment and Pledge of Allegiance. We will now move on to the Inspirational Moment and Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Nikki Porter will present this this evening. Mrs. Porter?
Tonight, I've asked to hear from one of Richland Two's outstanding leaders, a Forest Lake Elementary student, Isaiah Hollins, who was recently a featured speaker at the 2024 Abbott for College Summer Institute in Tampa, Florida. This young man spoke in front of 2,000 educators. Ladies and gents, please give a warm welcome to Isaiah Hollins.
Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't have a paper with me.
Okay, Isaiah, would you do us a favor and just tell us a little bit about your experience at the conference that you presented to?
The conference was extremely, it was like very motivational because I felt like everybody there believed in me. It was also kind of fun, and it was also kind of fun to be able to interact with the fellow speakers, Giselle and Ms. Reddy. At the conference, after it was done, I took a lot of pictures. That was probably my favorite part. The speech after, the questions he asked me really made me, well, the way I, the way I answered the questions kind of made me realize how important Abbott is and what really isn't anything that I feel like should be done to make Abbott better, but I'm not saying there isn't anything. I don't have a paper to read for, so I'm trying to go.
You're doing great.
Thank you. After the session was done, I got to see all of my teachers that were there, and that part was probably another really great part of it. I also went to the pool a few times, and that was kind of fun. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah.
Madam Chair, could I just add something to what Isaiah said, because I was there with Isaiah? Isaiah wowed that room of people. There was another student on stage that was from high school and a teacher who was an Abbott student and is now a teacher, and not to be biased, Isaiah was the star of the show, so much so that afterwards, everybody wanted a picture with Isaiah, which Isaiah loved. And in the afternoon, when we did our district session, that we pulled all of, we had over 150 of our teachers and administrators at the conference, and we did our planning session for Abbott for this year, our Abbott director or coordinator in the district asked me, Jeffrey asked me, said, "Well, you and Isaiah are going to come into the room. Do you want Isaiah to go first?" And I was like, "No," because Isaiah has stolen the spotlight, and so I'm going to go first, because if Isaiah goes in, everybody's going to be focused on him, and nobody will pay attention to me. So I went in first, and then Isaiah came in, and sure enough, he got a standing, a round of applause, and everybody just wanted to tell him what a great job he's done. It's phenomenal that an 11-year-old can stand up in front of 2,000 adults and speak in a way that was just powerful around how Abbott has impacted his life and what he's going to do with the knowledge he's gaining through our wonderful school district. Isaiah, you already know this, and I know your mom and sister know it, I am so proud of you. Thank you for representing our district. We appreciate that.
Thank you so much. We will now be moving to voting on Executive Session items. Item 8.1, Personnel Matter Regarding the Superintendent's Evaluation and Contract Modification. We have completed the superintendent's evaluation and will take action on the superintendent's contract at the end of August, at the next school board meeting, which is August the 13th. Therefore, there will be no action taken tonight on the superintendent's contract. Item 8.2, Receipt of Legal Advice, Proposed Litigation Settlement. May I please have a motion on the personnel matter regarding the super, I'm sorry, reading from the wrong one. May I please have a motion on the receipt of legal advice regarding a proposed litigation settlement?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
I move that the board accept the settlement offer the district has received in litigation we filed against Geo surfaces southeast in T Cool, and that we authorize the superintendent to execute on the district's behalf a settlement agreement resolving the case consistent with the settlement terms discussed in Executive Session.
Is there a second? Second. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Agostini, please check the motion.
That is correct.
Board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, zero no. We will now move to item 8.3, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases. May I please have a motion regarding employment recommendations and certified releases?
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move to approve the certified releases as presented for the 2024-2025 school year.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Mrs. McFadden. Mrs. Nash, please check the motion.
You know what? I need to say that over again. I move to approve the recommendations, employment recommendations, and certified releases as presented for the school year, 2024-2025 school year.
Mrs. Nash, is that correct?
Just for the, for the 2024-2025 school year is the only part that we need added.
Okay.
That is correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, please vote. The vote is six yes, zero no. We will now move to New Business, No Action Required. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'd like to ask Dr. Franklin Foster, our Senior Chief of Human Resources, to come to the podium to introduce our guests for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and fellow board members. I hope everyone's doing well tonight. Tonight, I have the pleasure to have the team here from Aritex, Mr. Dr. Gonzalo and Mr. Micah. They're here tonight to give the board an update on the HR assessment that they conducted on our HR operations, and so I'm going to turn it over to them at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Thank you, board members, Superintendent Dr. Moore, for your time today. Today, we will be providing a high-level overview of our key findings and recommendations of the Human Resources Assessment, and we structured the presentation to be concise while highlighting the most impactful areas of the report itself. We look forward to a productive discussion and a Q&amp;A session following the overview, but please feel free to ask questions at any point if you need any clarification. But before we dive in, we'd like to start with a quick introduction. My name is Edel Michelle, Managing Director at Aritex, and I lead the project managing for Needs Assessment here at Richland School District Two. My background spans both the public and private sectors with over 15 years of experience in strategic planning, human resources, and organizational transformation. I'm thrilled to be part of this important work with Richland School District Two, and now pass the, pass the mic to my colleague, Dr. Lakav.
Well, good evening, school board members and Dr. Moore. Glad to be here today. I come to you as a managing partner for Aritex as well. I come to you with over 27 years in K-12 experience, being a teacher all the way to leading Human Resources in two of the largest school districts in the United States, but thank you for the opportunity to be here.
Thank you, Dr. Lakav. So we'll take a moment to preview our agenda. If we can get this going, there we go. For today's presentation... For today's presentation, we'll begin by walking through our assessment approach and Dr. Lakava will then walk through our results, findings, and recommendations. And then we've included an appendix with additional data and details which we're happy to discuss further during the Q&amp;A session. Our aim is to provide you with the insights needed to make informed decisions about the continued success of Richland School District 2 based on the report that we have for the Human Resources Department. But before we dive in to our findings, we'd like to take a moment to express our sincere gratitude to everyone who contributed to this assessment. First and foremost, we want to thank you, board members and senior leadership team, for entrusting us with this important work. We're deeply appreciative of Dr. Franklin Foster, Dr. Latoya Adams, and Dr. Karen Lovett for their leadership and collaboration throughout this process. We'd also like to extend a special thank you to Dr. Coleman for her invaluable collaboration in designing our survey. Our assessment was greatly enriched by the insights of key district leaders and principals who shared their frontline perspectives, which provided invaluable context for our findings. And finally, we want to emphasize our appreciation for every staff member who participated in the survey. Their candid feedback forms the backbone of this assessment. So a little bit about the assessment approach itself. It is designed to be both comprehensive and actionable, focusing on real-world impact for the Richland School District 2. We've structured our work into four strategic phases, each building upon the last to create a robust foundation. In Phase 1, what we did was we conducted a thorough analysis of your current HR landscape, examining everything from policies to day-to-day operations. In Phase 2, which was critical, we engaged directly with your staff. And as mentioned, we had a great turnout with over one in every three employees that shared their thoughts. And this high participation gave us some confidence that the work that we're doing with the organization will achieve some of its goal. Our analysis in Phase 3 just doesn't identify the problems, but it uncovers opportunities. We're looking at where HR can become a true strategic partner for the organization and moving from transactional to strategic in the work that it does. And in the final phase, it isn't just about delivering a report. We're also providing a clear roadmap for implementation, including both quick wins and long-term strategies for success. And throughout this process, we've maintained a laser focus on your district's unique context and challenges. And this is just, wasn't just a one-size-fits-all approach. The recommendation that was included was a comprehensive look at how we can elevate HR from just, not from just supporting the district, but to a key driver for district-wide excellence as well. In this slide, bless you, we illustrate the comprehensive nature of our assessment. We're covering both organizational and functional dimensions of HR. We've left no stone unturned in this process in our evaluation, which ensure that we address every aspect of the human resources, opportunity for effectiveness. On the organizational side, which I'll start there, we've examined strategic planning, governance, and continuous improvement. These are foundational elements that drive HR's overall direction and impact. On the functional side, as you see, we've deep-dive into the day-to-day operations that directly impact your staff's experience from recruitment to hiring, to career development and employee relations. Our assessment looks at how effectively HR is serving your employees at every stage of their career path and journey with the Richland School District. This holistic approach allows us to identify not just isolated issues, but systemic opportunities for improvement as well. And now I'll pass it to Dr. Lakava, who will dive into our findings and finish the vial for us.
Well, again, good evening, school board chair, Dr. Elkin Scott, school board vice chair Porter, school board members and Superintendent Dr. Moore. I just want to take a moment to thank Isaiah for being here. Thank you for your moment of inspiration. It's great to see a student here. I wanted to let you know that for the next six slides, I'll be sharing a lot of information. I'm going to try to keep it high level. For the most part, if, when you look at this slide right here, this is a heat map that we've included in this slide presentation. It's also included in the HR report. Some of the high-level pieces that this survey result shows that over 1,500 staff members participated in the survey, which is a participation rate of 35%. What you need to know is that a good participation rate is 25%. So I want to publicly thank the staff members of Richland School District 2 for participating, giving Dr. Foster the feedback that he needs to kind of move the district forward. So thank you very much to those that are listening this afternoon. As you can see in this slide, in the legend on the top, the greener the scores are, that means the stronger agreement there is among the staff members. The rhetoric is they disagree with those 11 questions or 13 questions that were asked of them. As you can see, for the most part, this is a good assessment, right? It's moving in the right direction. Is there opportunities for growth? Absolutely. We all have to do that. There is one question that came out a little pink and that is around the compensation structure, but that is something. That is something that Dr. Foster and his team and I believe the Chief Financial Officer are working through that. So that's not a big surprise. The question with the highest percentage rating was how likely are you recommending, are you to recommend Richland School District? That was highly rated by the administrators here. And then the lowest question again was about compensation. So the next two slides, we're going to talk about key findings, the strengths, and we're also going to talk about opportunities for growth. And I know these are the slides that everybody's been waiting for, so I'll jump in. The Richland HR Division demonstrated four major strengths within the assessment, highlighting areas where the organization is performing well. The first strength, which Dr. Foster's in the midst of completing, is around organizational restructure and hiring for key positions. We know that organizational restructure is a very important process that can significantly impact efficiency, adaptability, and overall success. Having the right people on the bus is important to move towards a strategic and transformational organization. And today I got the pleasure to meet some of those new members in the HR Division, and I can tell you they're moving in the right direction there. The second strength for Richland is that they invested in a compensation study, which can be leveraged towards addressing current challenges related to market competitiveness and internal equity. Competitive wages and internal equity are crucial in recruiting and retaining top talent in your organization. This is something that you need to keep a focus on, even though you're making progress. The third strength is vision for transformation, which HR leadership has articulated a clear and compelling vision for transformation, focusing on long-term strategic goals and aligning with the district's mission to drive impactful change. A clear vision for transformation is essential for successfully guiding an organization through significant changes. They must have a very clear vision in order to move from transactional to transformation, and they're doing that as well. The last piece is about the talent development. HR is actively investing in its talent and capacity as a multi-year strategy, aimed at improving talent management and overall HR effectiveness. Talent development is not only an industry best practice, but a beneficial, it's beneficial for organizations aiming to thrive in today's environmental changes. Investing in staff, school organizations can foster a more engaged, productive, and innovative workforce, ensuring long-term success and sustainability. So, Dr. Foster, thank you for that progress that you're making. I think HR is moving in the right direction. The next slide is about the opportunities. This is what we always want to hear from an HR assessment. What are the opportunities for growth? And as you can see, there are six opportunities that we have highlighted from the HR assessment. There is a lot more information in the HR report, but these are the six that we want to highlight today. Number one is the HR organization. It can be optimized to enhance collaboration, agility, and customer focus, addressing concerns raised in the survey regarding HR services and responsiveness. In other words, HR needs to work better as a team, be more flexible, and focus more on helping customers. This helps solve the problems people mentioned in the survey about HR services and their responsiveness. This change also means moving from handling day-to-day tasks to planning and thinking about the big picture. The second opportunity is around workforce planning. Workforce planning capability should be enhanced by adopting a more proactive, data-driven approach to anticipate talent needs. As the survey results highlight challenges in filling critical vacancies and ensuring adequate staffing needs. Workforce planning is critical to ensuring that an organization has the right people with the right skills and the right roles at the right time. The third component is recruitment and retention. They need, even though this is moving in the right direction, HR needs to continue focusing on recruitment and retention, improving recruitment and hiring processes, an opportunity to attract diverse, high-quality candidates more efficiently and effectively. One of the things I always like to let the board know in all HR is that it is imperative that every student in Richland have a talented teacher in front of them by the first day of school. And that is a major goal in regards to recruitment and hiring. Compensation, we talked a little bit about already. What I can say is a strong compensation system is crucial as it attracts, retains, and motivates talent while ensuring equity and compliance, thereby supporting organizational performance and employee satisfaction. The fifth one is around development. This is a huge piece around retention. And staff that are developed, we know through research and the experiences we've worked through others, with other school districts, is that when you improve staff development, you improve skills and career prospects, boost job satisfaction, and foster personal growth, which contribute to their professional success, fulfillment, and retention. The last opportunity for HR is strategic alignment. There is an opportunity to further enhance your strategic alignment between HR initiatives and district priorities, as shown by the survey results highlighting different levels of understanding of HR objectives among various employee groups. So align the goals, make sure that they're aligned to what the strategic plan is pushing, ensures that you meet those organizational goals, initiatives, and resources are coordinated and directed toward achieving a unified vision. Those are the opportunities at a very quick, high level. And there's more information in that HR assessment report. Of course, we'll be here for any questions and answers you want to dive into these opportunities as well. The next slide that I want to show you is the recommendations by phases. The next slide shows a strategic roadmap phase for maximum impact through a multi-year list of prioritized recommendations that are based on urgency, impact, and capacity. When you look across this roadmap, you can see that we've broken those priorities into three categories: short-term, midterm, and long-term. And the reason for that is not to overwhelm the HR organization. And from experiences of working with other districts, we know that what are the, what are the quick wins? And what are more around transformative initiatives? So there's 27 in here, and we did talk to HR earlier this afternoon and we told them, you don't have to accomplish this, these 27 initiatives in 12 months. This is a multi-year strategy. And we are working with Dr. Foster to ensure that there's success in the implementation piece as well. The last slide is recommendations by key areas. We wanted to show you some of the key drivers. And it's around recruitment, hiring, and selection, retention, compensation, and benefits, onboarding, development, and career planning. These are the three that they are truly focusing on. There's goals around them, as you can see the slide, and they are meeting some of them already. We know that Dr. Foster has already shared with us that he has been able to onboard people within 17 days, which is an industry standard, and there's a lot to congratulate him for in his team. So kudos to you on doing that as well. So more information on this is also in the appendices that we, appendices in the back of this presentation that we've added. Last slide is our next step. So we want to make sure that the board knows that we are committed to providing Dr. Foster and his team support. We're not just leaving you a report and taking off. We want to make sure that that is a living document. Sometimes these assessments, people read them, they shelve them, and then they forget about them. But we want to make sure that this, that this initiative that you invested on is actually implemented correctly, and that's why we're here. We tell Dr. Foster that we're either a phone call or a Google Teams meet away. And so we hope that he'll use us because we're here to support Dr. Foster and his team. But these are the next steps. We will continue coaching support for the HR team. We will offer ongoing support as necessary, providing expert guidance. And then after this is done, we'll have a post-meeting with him to gather your feedback, gather the feedback of the HR team, and also to refine our implementation strategy as well. But hopefully, we were able to provide you with a high-level, 10-minute, hopefully I met that 10-minute mark, and we made sure that we practiced that to make sure that we did not upset anybody. But thank you for having us. We are open to Q&amp;A, but again, thank you for the opportunity to work with Dr. Foster and his team.
Thank you so much. Board members, are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
Thank you all so much for your presentation. This is just one quick question. How long have you been doing this survey or working with us?
It was a few months, Dr. Foster, do you remember? January.
January. All right. Thank you so much.
Any other questions?
Madam Chairwoman, I only have a comment. Thank you. That was so great, and you did it in 10 minutes. Phenomenal. And like the date of the presentation, everything was absolutely wonderful, and thank you to the 35% of you who filled out the survey. I know Ms. Porter had asked people to chime in a while back, and so thankful you guys all did the interview. Thank you.
Mrs. McFadden?
Yes, Dr. Lakava, thank you so much. Appreciate that, that you're saying that it's not something that we're going to get and throw in a drawer because I do think this is a great guide for us to monitor where HR is going. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. It's right here. I thank you all for the presentation, Mr. Michael, for what you all have done. It's great work. I love the presentation, the colors and everything are good too.
And I also want to say thank you so much. It was very detailed, and I really appreciate that. I can tell that you guys really got a lot of input and feedback. But I guess my only question would be, did you get an opportunity to talk to retired teachers? Or maybe people who applied in the district, but did not get the opportunity to work for the district?
No, we did not have the opportunity to do that, although we did look at information that was provided. We got quite a bit of information, worked with Dr. Lovett on past data, and that's what we actually leveraged some of our information on, but did not have the opportunity to speak directly to them.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We will now move to 9.2. The agenda item in this session is a capital projects update. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to call Mr. Will Anderson, our Chief of Operations, to do the update.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. These guys set a high standard, so I'll do my best to keep it within under 10 minutes. Speaking of that, you all have your full report in your board documents as well as individual reports for some of our active construction projects. Quickly this evening, just to go over where we're at, you can see all the completed projects. Been very thankful since 2000, the end of 2018, 2019, we started to complete a lot of projects. So those are all projects completed. Currently have seven projects under construction with a handful of those being completed, I say fall, August this summer. And we will do a little bit of a deeper dive into our Performing Arts Center here coming up shortly. That is a photo of the new media center at Pontiac Elementary School, which will have its final inspection Thursday, July 11. We currently have five projects in design. That's a rendering of the new facility, new weight and fire facility at Westwood High School. Those projects are scheduled to start in spring and summer. And then lastly, we have these projects that we have yet to begin with, and we hope to get those started as we roll construction projects off and then roll these on into design. These are more smaller projects, but we hope to get those started to wrap up all of our projects by the timeline established for the bond council. So quickly, I wanted to just do more of a deeper dive into our Performing Arts Center, our first of its kind. We've had our district auditorium for almost 30 years on the campus of Richland Northeast. But now we have a state-of-the-art, standalone center right here behind R2I2. It passed its final inspection on June the 29th, and so we are super excited that we can now walk around in there without hard hats and really start moving into the facility. I know several of you have been in the facility, had the pleasure of Ms. McFadden and Mr. Trapp in the facility about a week ago. And so really close to opening it up. Some fast facts for the public and for you all. It's about roughly 50,000 square feet facility, holds roughly 1,200 seats. I say roughly 1,200. We can move seats in and out based on more chairs, and so we can get more than 1,200, but physical seats is around 1,200. A 90-foot skylift. I'm not a huge theater orchestra person knowing all this, but this is like a really big deal for the theater folks to be able to really have some amazing things in and out of the building. Three different catwalks, so we can put sound and lights and all the different things our theater folks there. The lighting, the rigging, the sound, state-of-the-art, it's... The lighting, the rigging, the sound, state-of-the-art, it's better than any of the local theaters around, including the Cogurt Center here in the region. We have two very large dressing rooms for the groups, and then two, I say small, they're really not that small, but they're for the big actors or actresses for them. We have an art gallery, so we'll also be having, not only performing, but we have space, not only in the art gallery, but throughout the building. And you'll see some more pictures shortly of showing there's visual arts as well. We have a catering kitchen, so we don't have to have a lot of, we can have events inside our very nice lobby area. Orchestra pit, again, we can bring the orchestra up and down. This is not something that's common, and so really cool about that. A black box theater, so a more intimate setting, which connects to our large theater and our easy load-in and load-out. This is something that the people who do this for a living love to have the ease of basically backing the truck up and walking right onto the stage and with our scene shop as well. So we've, as mentioned, we've had a Richland Northeast auditorium, the district auditorium for almost 30 years, and so the staff who've been working for that many years played a pivotal role to make sure all the things that, the challenges they've had were put into this Performing Arts Center. So we are so happy to be able to show this finished product off to the community very soon. Just some of the images, these are some, the floor is now, we've been covering the floor up until last week, so unfortunately, I didn't get the most, the best, the most current images of the floor, but it really highlights the Richland II logo and frame, flame, I should say. Lots of spaces now that look blank, but that's because we're going to have artwork, rotating artwork on display, student artwork and other rotating artwork. Again, more images of the interior lobby space of the facility and the different colors, the restrooms, and the different things that are going on there. These are the wow factors here. This is the, this is the space. So the image on your left is standing from the stage, just very impressive facility. And then the image on the right is from the balcony seating. I've not yet sat in every spot in the theater, but not a bad seat in the house. We've had sound and everything going on, and it's really, really impressive what we're able to accomplish. And then some of the exterior images, a few things that we've put into the building that you don't know unless you start realizing this. We've got exterior, we've got, the building is white, as you can see, but we have colored lights, for example, on the exterior that we can change those as well, that can mirror the lights that are going on inside. So really high-tech things that that image just shows how we lit up in red one evening. And so that's a very, very high overview. We are finalizing the hiring process for our first director. Hopefully, by your next board meeting, we will have that recommendation as part of your package. And then we are working on getting our schedule done and complete, working with our Ms. Owens and Communications Treaty Partnership to have like the official grand opening in November and with a soft opening over the next few months to really make sure we work out the kinks of the facility. And lastly, just didn't make it to your board presentation, but we, Bethel-Hambury Elementary School was honored by Learning by Design Magazine, the premier source for education, design, innovation, excellence. It's on the cover of the magazine with an article about the school and the things that we did at the building. And so Bethel-Hambury is currently a finalist for the McConnell Award, which is the highest award for educational facility for design and building. We'll find that out in October. So it's really cool to be recognized. Thanking our board and our public for the trust and confidence you had in us doing the Performing Arts Center, doing these things, and we're being recognized across the country for the work that we're doing. So thank you again to our public. Thank you to the board for supporting those initiatives. With that, Dr. Scott, answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Board members, are there any questions?
Mrs. McFadden?
I have a question, I have a comment. I've watched this go up. This is fantastic work. Mr. Trapp and I got an opportunity to walk around with Mr. Anderson and Mr. Clayton and a couple other people to, in this facility. It is phenomenal. We got to sit on the stage and look out across. It is something that, I mean, you cannot describe it. It is so, that's the picture. It is grandiose. This is a big deal, and I look forward to elementary school graduations, middle school graduations. I know that the calendar's filling up, so principals, get your requests in, because this is something where, you know, when we have our high school graduations, they're in a big arena. This is great for middle school, elementary school, so principals, they're taking it. I'm telling you now, the calendar's filling up. Go ahead and send it in. Award ceremonies for our students, this is what this is for. Our students and our teachers get first dibs, community gets second, but we're able to create revenues. I mean, EL Wright does a play every year for the past 10 years, the orchestra band, and another one, the orchestra band and the chorus. They have a great program that they put on for the past 10 years. They've been having to do it in the old EL Wright building. They got to do it one more, this year in their new building, but there's a stage available. And these people make these props. If you could go in and see it, the experience that I had, it is truly phenomenal. I told them I want tickets to whatever's going down. I want a ticket, because this is something that we should really be proud of, because we don't have anything like this in Richland II, in the whole northeast area at all. Everything's downtown. Anytime you want to go see a play, got to go downtown. So Mr. Anderson and his team, I'm just so grateful that you guys were able to do this. This is phenomenal work. And the Bethel-Hambury being on the front of the magazine, I mean, it's just, it's amazing, and I'm so proud of you guys and for what the work that you're doing, Mr. Anderson. Very good. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
Thank you. And Mrs. McFadden just sparked a question inside of me. When we're talking about utilizing these facilities for, you know, our elementary school graduations or plays or whatever, will these schools or groups be having to pay rent to use these facilities, or how does that operate?
We're still working through those details. So we're mirroring, using a template that we have with the district auditorium as our template, but we also understand that this building, the expenses will be, it will, we, it's going to be expensive to operate. We've done some analysis, so external groups, groups from traveling shows, there will be fees associated with that. But our internal events, we want, I mean, rob Peter to pay Paul, so the internal events, obviously, we have to find a good balance. And so we're working through that, getting the new director hired will help us work through to make sure that we're not, we're creating as much revenue as possible so we can be as self-sufficient as possible, but we also want to make sure we give as many opportunities as possible for our students to perform on the big stage. But there's also an opportunity, when we have really high, nice events come, their families can experience that, which they can't now experience that event here in Richland II. So we're seeing the ways we can marry both, that we're not, you know, spending millions of dollars and not getting any revenue, which we know we can't do that. So we have, we're still working through that. We might not be able to have every single event at the Performing Arts Center, but we'll be able to have, we've got a plan we're working on so that certain events will be able to be here, and certain events will be at their local high school and on a schedule that we can honor as much students as possible, but understanding we have, we have expenses and we need to make sure we can pay the bills, so.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
You're welcome.
Are there any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We're now going to move to 9.3, Discussion Policy BID, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. This agenda item in this session is a discussion regarding Policy BID, Board Member Compensation and Expenses. I now open the floor up for discussion. Board members?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
I asked for this to be added on the agenda because I received, trying to find it, in May, my paycheck for April, and it was much more than I expected. And I didn't look at the March paycheck, but I sent a note to Dr. Moore saying, I believe I was overpaid for April. Can somebody verify with me the meetings and dates I've been paid for? Thank you. And as I was given the amount of meetings that I came to, there's been a change in practice that somehow the board started getting paid for committee meetings in January, board members did, who attended these meetings. And then in March, board members started getting paid for agenda-setting meetings. And so my overpayments were because I attended these agenda-setting meetings, which I never expected to get paid for. So I'm trying to understand, as I've looked through policies, BID and board meetings, and this Act 262, how it is that in years past, board members only got paid for board meetings because they were meetings of the board, but not committee meetings and agenda meetings? How did that come about and it was never brought to the board, these payments or the increases? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Agostini. Any other comments from board members?
Yes. Mrs. Nash? Thank you. I'm not sure how it came about either, except for it was brought saying that board members would get paid for, in the policy, for meetings. And so that's what we were told, and that's what we've gone with, but it's not by any means an increase. If I'm not mistaken, we have 30 meetings per year that we all get paid for. And in 2022, 2023, those meetings were motored through, and, you know, Chairman Trapp didn't get to take any part of, for six months of any payment of him being chair. So I don't think that anyone, I don't want to make it seem like anybody's taking advantage. People are here, they are doing the work, and they are coming to meetings. And it's not like if they hit 30 meetings, whether that it's committee or otherwise, and you correct me if I'm wrong, that they will be paid for those 30 meetings. If that's my understanding, if Dr. Moore or anybody can respond to that.
Let's have more discussion first. Mrs. McFadden?
So I agree with Mrs. Nash. Whether we have 30 meetings at the, from January to May, we're only getting 30, paid for 30 meetings. So if we work July to December, it's not like we're getting paid any extra money. And I believe workers work their wages. So if you're here doing the work, then for those 30 meetings, you should get paid for it, depending on if you want to be on a committee or not. However, in the past, when I originally joined the board, board members got paid twice a month on the regular schedule with teachers. So we got paid one flat rate on the first and one on the 15th. However, due to certain situations and walkouts and things, the policy was changed to prevent board members from getting paid for meetings they did not attend. So with that came the new thing that we're dealing with now, was that you can only attend 30 meetings and you only get paid for 30 meetings, whereas before, if you attended two meetings, zero meetings, well, I wouldn't say zero, but two meetings or 10 meetings, you got the same pay for the whole year. So in 2022, I believe that was changed. So if we could go back to something like that, that would alleviate the need to not get paid for six months if we use all 30 meetings from January to June. So in my experience, going back to the one where we get paid one flat rate, those who want to attend 10 meetings or want to do extra work, you only get paid that flat rate, whereas if you only want to attend one meeting, you still get paid that same rate.
Are there any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Agostini?
To address the change in 2022, that was brought to the board based upon a, I think it was a county statute and why it was changed. It wasn't so that we went and penalized people for not showing up for meetings. It was based upon some type of statute. I'll have to go back and listen to that. But also, as I'm reading Policy BID, Board Member Compensation and Expenses, it says, "Per diem and mileage will not be paid for more than 30 board meetings in any one calendar year." A board meeting is not a committee meeting. A board meeting is a meeting of the entire board, where there is a quorum present. It's not for agenda-setting meetings for three members of the board to be there, and it's not for committee meetings. It is for board meetings.
Thank you.
Madam Scott?
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
So I will agree with Lindsay on that portion. However, when I started the legislative committee, I was told, I was not expecting to get committee meeting pay. I did not know how that worked. I was told by administrative staff that if you have a committee meeting, you will get paid for that. And I said, oh, okay, I didn't know that. Fine. And went on about my business. The concern is that some board members were told that we would be getting paid for these committee meetings. Somehow, the information wasn't translated to other board members. So I was just as surprised to find out that my board colleagues didn't know that we were getting paid as they were to know that we were getting paid. So I'll just leave that with that. I didn't know that Lindsay didn't know that we were getting paid for committee meetings or other board members, but I think that the information was provided from, actually, I know it was provided from administration. However, I didn't know that other board members didn't know.
Are there any other comments?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
If I could, let me first off say that it really doesn't matter to me how we do this, because every year so far, we've been far more than 30 meetings. But if we read, state law is actually where it talks about 30 board meetings are the maximum number we can be paid for. If we go to Policy, if we go to Policy BE, if we read that, at least to me, what it reads is a board meeting is any time the public is allowed to attend a meeting because of the Freedom of Information Act. If that's the case, any meeting that we notice because of that law, that could be considered, well, it should be considered a board meeting. But having said that, in my mind, the most logical thing to do, if we want to change, if we want to commit the administration to pay us for specific meetings, I would suggest that we add language to this policy that outlines in Policy BID which meetings will get paid for, because the actual language here, it says that, said board members may receive per diem, it says per meeting for board members. It doesn't even say the per diem is for a board meeting, it just says meetings. So I think if we want to eliminate any confusion or any discontent, the best thing to do is just change this policy to be very specific, so there's no personal interpretation that might lead to someone not approving what the administration's doing.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Any other comments?
And I just want to say, I agree with Mr. Trapp, because that's usually the problem that we have, is very vague language and have it spelled out, and it's not always open to one person or more than one person's interpretation, but it is clearly spelled out, which is how policy should be made.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Any other comments? I'll just add one comment. I know ever since I've been on the board, we've only been paid for board meetings and special call board meetings, and it was always shared that you get paid when it's required to be a form. So committee meetings are not meetings where a form is required. So if you guys want to change this policy, which I'm in support of the policy as it stands, because we have to be very careful and mindful of going over those 30 meetings being paid, because that is a state law, that we cannot be paid more than 30 meetings. However, I do understand that it was a miscommunication, but that's just something that we really need to work on, understanding what board policies mean. And then when we are not clear on what board policy means, maybe we need to talk with board members on your board or other boards to get a more, more understanding of what it says. And I do recall, at the beginning of the year, we made that clear, that board meetings are that, board meetings and special call board meetings. So I was a little surprised also about payments for committee meetings. But again, it is at the will of the board. If this is something that you guys would like to change, we can put it on the agenda for the next meeting and have different language. If not, maybe we now have a clear understanding that payment comes when there's a quorum required, and then we can move on to the next policy. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that the issue is, it's still not clear. And again, there are several new board members that came on this time, and there'll be new board members that come in the future. And in order to make it clear for everybody, and it goes along in time, then that need language needs to be in there, because I want to make it clear that nobody that is working on this board has been just going like, oh, yeah, let's just have meetings so that we can get paid for them. It was brought to us, and we said, oh, we didn't know. We are new board members, and you guys have done a lot of things that were in practice, not necessarily always policy. So we shouldn't be, this brought to us as if though we were doing something out of the way, when there was a lot of practice, not always policy. And I would like to, as we talk about here on this board, clarity is kindness, so I would like to see those words that say a definition of what a board meeting is, so it is transferred down to when we leave, that is what it is, and not somebody saying later, well, this is how it's always been, because that's always been the problem with communication.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. Mrs. Agostini?
When I'm looking at Board Policy BE, it defines board meetings as regular board meetings, work sessions, special meetings, and... work sessions, work sessions, special meetings and public hearings. To me, those are the definitions of what our meetings are. I would love to hear from administration and their reasoning for doing that. And I'm curious about the feedback because many of these members were on committees last year when committees didn't get paid, why they didn't question and say, you know, we didn't get paid last year. Why are we getting paid now this year?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
If I may point out a couple of things. Last year, 2023, between January 1st and June 30th, I was definitely paid for workshops and committee meetings because I, I went through the calendar. I counted up, I have an email that says that everyone on the board had exceeded their 30 days in the middle of June. And we had not had 30 regular board meetings, special called meetings or work sessions. So we were definitely paid for things like retreats, committee meetings. And I'm not, again, I'm not trying to say that someone was wrong to do those things. But my, my point is, I counted them up and we definitely were paid for more than, than what is just suggested here. And, and we have definitions in Policy BE, but I don't think that those, those, when it says regular board meeting, that is telling us what a regular board meeting is. It doesn't limit board meetings to those three things right there. Because we do have, we do have workshops, we have retreats and things like that that are definitely board meetings. We definitely have a quorum. So again, I would suggest that we either have the School Board Association or the administration or someone help us draft language that will make this very clear. So there's really no reason for any confusion or discontent in the future when we do these things. It would really be easy to simply add the language that pointed out in Policy BID that those, that the meetings that we are compensated for are regular board meetings, work sessions or whatever we want to, to put on that list. And that would eliminate any, like I said, any discussion in the future.
We do have a workshop in September, I think it's September 6th coming up. So that will be a great time to add this policy. And if we want to make any revisions, we can do so during that time for reading. Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. We're now going to move to 9.4 Superintendent Highlights 2023-2024 School Year. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It has been a great school year. And we just want to share a few of the wonderful things that have happened over the course of this year. So can we get the first slide? I don't have to click her. So as you know, academics has always been a focus for our district and it's been one of our priorities with the board. So we want to let you know that we had three National Merit Scholar winners. We had over $171 million in scholarships, which is a $3 million increase over the previous year. We had 14 students that earned their AA degree through the Avid program at Ridgeview High School, as well as making sure that they graduated from high school. So that saved their parents about $24,000 for each of those students. Next slide, please. We also embraced our STEM focus in our district this year. So you will see that we had some standing, outstanding students. Ava Phillips won the Regeneron Science Talent Search. Joseph Evans, Jasper Evans, excuse me, received the Outstanding Youth Award. And we launched our comprehensive cybersecurity program at Westwood High School. And why is that so important? Because that will provide the workforce for Scout when they open up their plant in four years. Those students will be ready to enter in at the entry level or go on to pursue advanced degrees and then be able to work at Scout. We also had some very, very prestigious scholarships and awards given. One of our partners in this area is Michelin Tech, Michelin. And so we had three students that received the Michelin Tech Scholars. Now, what is the benefit of this? Those students will have paid internships with Michelin and they receive money, which will then hopefully lead to future employment at their facility. So we're very excited about that. Alyssa Amaker was awarded the Dobby Johnson Roundtree Scholarship to Spelman College, a full scholarship. And then Harmonie Frederick, who Mrs. Agostini's Rotary Club recognized. She was awarded Congressional Medals for Gold and for Silver. We're very proud of her accomplishments. Academics is important, but we also know our students need to be well-rounded. So we have some wonderful athletic accomplishments to celebrate this year. We all know that Ridgeview is the Class 4A Boys Basketball State Champions again. I think this is their fourth title within seven years. So I have said that they are a dynasty. We had four out of five high schools were track and field state champions. And we had over 15 individual state championships in various sports, to include a dominating female wrestler. Love it. And then one that speaks close, dear to my heart is our 100% graduation rate from our JROTC programs across all five high schools. So that means for the public, every one of our seniors that were in a JROTC program, which is not about the military, recruiting for the military. It's about teaching our students leadership skills and how to be of service to their community. All of those students graduated, 100% graduation rate. We also had multiple schools earning their honor unit with distinction recognition. And Richland Northeast High School was ranked number one for the Navy ROTC in the state of South Carolina. But we're not done yet. We have some innovative educational programs that are operating within our district. We all know about the Bengal Biodiesel Program at Blythewood. And yes, I actually got to ride the bus that was fueled by the biodiesel fuel. We also had our Agro-Voltalic Pollinator Garden Project at Richland II. In Richland II I II. We launched and recruit and retained and restructured our pilot program for our military-connected students. Ridgeview also earned the College Board AP Computer Science Female Diversity Award for achieving high female representation in AP Computer Science Principles. That's important because we are trying to ensure that we pull more non-traditional students into those fields that are normally dominated by others. So in this case, which is a male-dominated field, we're pulling more females in. And we're doing the same thing in other programs that are being, that are dominated by females. We also have Ridgeview as one of 834 schools receiving recognition in the category of AP Computer Science Programming. But we also have great educators in our district because they make the magic happen every day in their buildings. So we are blessed to have Dr. Sabina Masa-Taylor, who is our 2024 South Carolina Elementary Principal of the Year. We are also blessed to have Mrs. Karis Masee. Masee, it was coming, Masee, who is the 2024 South Carolina Middle Level Principal of the Year. So that means we have two of the principals out of the three, so elementary, middle and high, right here in our district for the state of South Carolina. But we also have a finalist for Teacher of the Year, and that was Mr. Will Epps from Blythewood High School. He was a finalist for the 2024 South Carolina Teacher of the Year. He's also a graduate of Blythewood High School. And we have great magnet programs. So our district won the 2023 Donna Grady Greer Career National District Award for Magnet Sustainability. Three of our schools are Magnet Schools of America Merit Awards winners. Emily Erberlin was named a 2023 National Magnet Teacher of the Year. So we got Will for state and now we have Emily for the year, national. And then Barbara Turner, our Director of Magnet Programs, has been named the Region Four Director at Magnet Schools of America. Going to the community, we have RNE TV Live won the top broadcast awards nationally. Forest Lake Elementary students won multiple categories at the South Carolina Junior Beta Club Convention. We had Kristen Bullington named the 2024 South Carolina Conservation Secondary Teacher of the Year. And last but not least, we have Isaiah, who we heard from earlier today, who represented our district at the National Avid Conference and did a fabulous job. So we are purpose-driven in Richland School District Two so that our students are going to be future-ready. So thank you for giving me this opportunity to celebrate the excellence of education. And I am so excited to see what we are going to do next year.
Thank you, Dr.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. We'll now move to 10, Item 10, New Business Action Requested. 10.1, Richland County Board of Assessment and Appeals Appointee. The agenda item in this section is regarding the appointment of an individual to the Richland County Board of Assessment Appeals. The purpose of the Board of Assessment Appeals is to provide an independent and neutral body to review property tax disputes between the assessor and the taxpayer. All board members who are appointed should have a background in one of the following areas: appraisal, real estate development, condemnation experience or experience with real estate litigation matters. May I please have a motion regarding the Richland County Board of Assessment and Appeals Appointee?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Porter?
I move to appoint person number four as the Richland County Board of Assessment Appeals Representative for Richland School District Two.
Is there a second? The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion to appoint number four?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm going to recuse myself so that I have no, I can avoid any future or present conflicts of interest.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Board members, please vote. Mrs. Porter, please check the motion, see if it's correct.
That's correct.
Board members, please vote. Okay, we have it up there. We have five yes, one extension and zero no. The motion passes with number four. We will now move to Item 10.2, Richland II's School Board Participation in Region Eight Meeting. May I please have a motion regarding the Richland II School Board Participation in the Region Eight Meeting? I will ask one more time, if not, the motion will fail. May I please have a motion for Richland School District Two to participate in the Region Eight Meeting?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. McFadden?
I move, for sake of discussion, I move that the Richland II School Board participate in the Region Eight Meeting on July 18th, 2024.
The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Nash.
I have, I have several questions. We recently received this and I have no idea what it actually involves. And so if we can get a little feedback on what the actual meeting is, how it was planned, who planned it? Because it seems like board members were not a part of that information or being a part of that. And, you know, one of the things that we've constantly heard is board members don't act alone, yet we don't know anything about this event. And we have three delegates here who were not part of it and they're Region Eight delegates.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Are there any other point of discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
My understanding, and I've talked to a couple of board members about this, heard a couple of different stories, because it was my understanding that all of the former officers received information. Whether that's true or not, I don't know, but that was what I was told. The reason why I didn't make the motion is I am not sure whether or not I can attend. But a reason why I would support this is looking back at our school board goals that we established, I believe, last November. Item number four was two opportunities will be provided for the board members to engage with county council and legislative bodies to advocate for organizational priorities and to meet our goals for the district. And I'm not quite sure that we've done that yet. We had, I guess, the pastries or, you know, we had that. But, you know, in order to, that was one of the goals that the board had set. So that would be why I would, you know, be favorable toward this. Again, I'm not sure whether I can commit to attend or not. And I do agree with Mrs. Nash, we haven't received much information, the board as a whole. I've only talked to a couple of board members about briefly what this is supposed to touch, based on.
Mrs. McFadden?
So would this be considered a meeting?
Well, that's a great question, Mrs. McFadden. And I guess we won't know the answer to that until we actually take a vote. Because if there's a quorum, it is a meeting. Any other discussion?
Would this be a meeting that we would be paid for?
Yes.
So my, okay, so I would like to say in favor with, with Ms. Agostini. She said, Agostini, she said that we do have board goals that we were supposed to meet with delegation. And we had proposed to meet with delegation several times, this particular board and our Legislative Committee. And we were told no. But in the same vein, we're saying yes to an outside entity to come in. And I know I talked to you about who's going to fund it, the money. And I talked to another board member in Richland One and they're not aware that their budget is paying for it. And I don't know that SESBA's budget is paying for it. So I would want clarity that since we're hosting it here, that our board, and I know you told me, is not going to be responsible for supplies and things like that and the room rentals and things like that. If we could kind of go over that again for just a moment.
Oh, absolutely. I'll give everyone else an opportunity to speak first. Mr. Trapp?
Yes, I just wanted to share with the board just a couple of things. The first that I knew about this was on June 8th, when I was contacted by the Region Eight Representative. And the email, I think, was sent to me and I'm going to assume the chairman of Richland One. And it basically just said that Region Eight wanted to have a dinner and discussion for us and Richland One to get together. And that's, that was pretty much it. They were looking for a date to do it. And emails went back and forth about possible dates. And other than that, I didn't receive another email with the finalized date until the day before our last board meeting and they said it was going to be the 18th. So I have no details on what it's going to be. And, you know, other than it's going to be on the 18th and it was going to be a dinner and discussion. Those were the only, just, just so everybody knows, I have, do we know what we're doing or where it's going to be? I haven't seen anything saying where it's going to be or anything like that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. Any other discussion? Okay, if not, I'll go ahead and, any more? Mrs. Agostini?
If you have more details to share, because my opinion has gone that it seems to be a cost and a few other things.
And let me just start by saying, of course, this activity took place prior to my appointment as chair. It was my understanding, and it was brought to me by one of our colleagues, one of the board members, who shared with me that she had been meeting with the Region Eight Director. And let me just share what the Region Eight Director is, because I was once the Region Eight Director. The Region Eight Director actually represents Richland School District One and Richland School District Two. And the purpose of having that person is to serve on what's called the South Carolina School Board Association Board. We meet quarterly and we talk about different policies and procedures. What's working in your district, what's not working. And then we also talk about collaboration. So one thing that they do is they encourages the school districts to get together and to plan pretty similar to what Mr. Trapp shared, to plan, share what's going on in your district and then just to kind of take notes and some things that we can take back to our school district. So with that being said, once the board member came to me and shared that she had already been in collaboration with the Region Eight Director, I reached out to the Region Eight Director just to say, I'm a new school board chair. What's going on, what can we do, what's going on? So with that, it was shared to me that this activity was actually planned for July 18th. It will be It will be held here at Richland Two facility, which is no cause, let me just say that, there's no cause for us to use the facility, because it's going to be in the auditorium. Richland School District One has committed to providing the meals. They have also, the Richland School District One, she had, she has reached out to different to come and just give a brief five to 10-minute update on what's going on. For an example, she shared with me that Sheriff Lot planned to be one of the speakers, and he's just going to share some safety tips to parents and the community leaders, and as well as to the school board of some things they should be able to look for, and they should be trying to implement in the school district as it relates to safety. And then she mentioned a few others, and I think it's like maybe four other speakers that's going to be a part of this. So, that's the information that I can share with you guys. Again, it's July 18th, it's 6:30, there's no cause to Richland School District Two, and it's more for collaboration of the regions with just Richland School District One and Richland School District. Are there any other questions? Because, I'm sorry.
Hearing your synopsis of everything that happened, I just want to say that, knowing that there are community members, that definitely community members that we would like to collaborate with, have taken this time and already blocked that time out on their calendars and are expecting us, I do plan to cancel anything that I have that day to represent our district and to be someone that's sitting in the room and participating, so.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Nash?
Unfortunately, that's not the case for every, because we were not notified until the very last minute and had no knowledge of it, and I just want to say here, you know, I hear said about our goals and about the legislative thing, and I want to reiterate that Ms. McFadden did say, you know, present meeting with our legislative time to do so, and that would have checked that off, and that would have been great, but that was, and committees, and my, and we're, committees were appointed by chairs, and we provide presentations of what's going to take place, and now today, we're sitting here, and we're going to set the precedent, and I have nothing, I have no qualms or any issue with having or mingling with our Region Eight, our Region Eight people, and having all those people come, because we want to hear from them. But I do take issue with that we're setting the precedent that many people on this board sat here and held up things having to do with our Hidden Danger Seminar, because we couldn't decide whether or not we wanted to let committees do what they were appointed to do, which was work with those committees, and now we're saying that, and I, it was repeated over and over again, the board is not one person, but I don't, that made decisions about, only that, it's in a summer month, we have short notice, and most of us, because it is the month that the board is off, are not able to be here. I don't think that that is a fair thing. I really wish it could be postponed, so that we could do this. I know that it cannot, I don't think it's fair to, like Ms. Porter said, the people that are coming here are city officials and leaders, but I do want to just make sure, I'm saying that, is that for that reason, I am going to be a no vote, because this was the precedent that was said about people acting on their own. So, that's, I'm going to be a no vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Agostini.
And I would like to take this opportunity to commend you for bringing this to a board vote, so it wasn't an individual decision on behalf of the board, but you took the initiative to make this a vote.
Madam Chairwoman.
One second.
Mrs. McFadden, then Mrs. Nash.
Nash, I'll go next.
Is that my request? I just wanted, Ms. Agostini, that was at my request.
Thank you for suggesting that.
Dr. Scott, so you said that Sheriff Lot will be providing information to the, to parents, and if four of us end up going, it will be FOIA'd, a paid meeting, and that means it will be open to the public. Are we prepared to feed the public, should they decide to come?
Mrs. McFadden, that is a great question, and that was also one of the questions that I proposed to Mrs. Harris in Richland One, and I have her for that, but I think that's something that we will have them, Mrs. Harris did say to me when I asked that question, was, we're not sure how many of the public will come, but I know they would do their best to make sure they have meal, enough meals there, but again, we don't know if 10 people will show up, or if 100 people will show up, but I also do want to say this, although this was short notice, and again, I was not even made aware of it until maybe a week ago, I'm still going to support it, because when we're talking about building the community, building relationships, and making a difference for our students, our teachers, our faculty, and our staff, I believe that it's our duty, if we are available, to take part in that, to see what it is that's going on, and what they have to share. There are many different speakers that's going to be there, and I think Mrs. Nash will to add that person to the list. I think this is the first time it has ever happened, so, you know, there are going to be some kinks and some things that they have to work out, but that's in anything when you're starting something new. So, I'm looking forward to attending just to see what it's like and what we can do moving forward, but I do want to say that I do agree with Mrs. Nash, that one board member cannot make decisions and start planning without the will of the board. So, that's why we had that conversation and said, you know, I don't want to make that decision, because it was put on me, for me to make it, and I think I've shared this with my colleagues, I'm the board chair, but I'm one vote, just like everyone else, and I'm not going to make those decisions. I'm going to bring it to the board, and we'll collectively make those decisions. So, with that said, we'd like to call for, oh, Ms. McFadden.
I appreciate what you just said, however, to a colleague that's on the other side of town, I brought the same proposal in November for the same thing that you're asking us to vote on tonight, that you're willing to support. When I brought it for our district to offer for delegations from multiple people, we don't even know who all's coming to this event, or who has been invited, and I don't know that it is skewed properly, and like you said, if everybody doesn't get a vote, that's what you said to me, if everybody doesn't get a vote, we don't need to do it. However, instead of supporting what I brought in for the winter celebration, you clearly turned it down, but on the other side of town, we have someone that is coming to do the same exact thing, and you're going to support them. I'm going to support it as well, because I think the work is important. However, we're being fair amongst each other as board colleagues that work together in our district on this side, and that the gratitude and the graciousness that you're showing to our counterparts on the other side of town is shown to the same people that you sit beside of at this meeting.
And I wasn't going to comment, but you know me, I'm going to make a comment. First of all, there's no such thing as other side of the park, or county, or whatever, because one thing I've learned, especially as an educator, their students are our students, and our students are their students, because students are so transient. And two, moving forward, I'm going to focus on what's happening now, and not in the past. That's why we have the front mirror and a rearview mirror. So, with that being said, I'll call for the vote. Mrs. McFadden, if you would, check the motion, please, see if it's correct.
It's correct.
Board members, please vote. Now, we're going to move to agenda items for next meeting, 11.1, draft agenda for the August 13, 2024 regular board meeting. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is August 13, 2024. The board will meet and conduct regular scheduled business items. Call to order will be at 5:30 PM. Then we'll move to approval of the agenda, and then release session. In executive session, we will discuss student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations, and certified releases. Release back to the public session will be at 6:30 PM, followed by inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Then we will have our special recognitions of new school and district administrators, followed by the consent agenda, which would include approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from previous meetings, and classified employment releases and in-district transfers. We'll then have public participation, followed by voting on executive session items, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment items discussed in executive session. We'll then move to unfinished business, no action requested. We will look at policy revision proposals for Policy BID, board member compensation and expenses. Move to the agenda items for the next meeting, which would be the draft agenda for August 27, 2024 regularly scheduled board meeting. Go into our, if needed, items of public participation, executive session, voting on executive session items, followed by board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Board members, are there any revisions or additions to your agenda? Mrs. McFadden?
Did she say that? Adding the contract?
Yes. Thank you, Mrs. McFadden. Would you make a motion to add that to the agenda, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. McFadden.
I'd like to make a motion to take action on Dr. Moore's evaluation and contract.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Nash.
This will be added to August 13?
Yes. And once it's up, Mrs. McFadden, if you would just proof the motion, please.
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
Board members, please vote. We will move on, there is no public participation.
Dr. Scott. I have two motions to make to add.
Absolutely.
The first one, I'd like to, I move to move the discussion of Policy BID to a workshop and take it off of the August 13 meeting.
Is there a second? Second. If you can repeat that motion, so Mrs. Washington can have that, please.
I move that we remove Policy BID discussion from the August 13 meeting and place it during
Mrs. Porter, please check the motion.
That's correct.
Board members, please vote.
Yes.
Mine's, it's circulating.
Wait a second, we're still waiting for the vote.
But I've heard, what, the affirmative?
Six yes, zero no. Now, Mrs. Porter, we'll move back to you for your next motion.
Yes, ma'am. I'm not exactly sure how to word this one, but I'd like to add a discussion if there's any items that, from Title IX changes, that are effective as of August 1st, that would pertain to our student handbook, or anything for our parents to be informed about. I'd like for us to review that, or at least make sure that we have that discussion. If it doesn't pertain to that, and it's more for our administrators, I'd like for that to be added in a board brief, just to know that, what those changes are in relation to our circuit.
Mrs. Porter, it sounds like that's something for a board brief or a presentation.
Right, I wasn't sure, so.
So, you could make a motion that we get district office to present on the Title I?
Title IX, yeah.
Title IX, so if you could make a motion for that.
Okay.
To add to the agenda.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move that we get any updates for Title IX added to a future agenda.
Thank you. The motion has been properly made, is there a second?
Second.
The motion's been made by Mrs. Porter, seconded by Mrs. Agostini. Is there any discussion? Okay, we'll wait until the motion is placed. And Mrs. Porter, if you could review the motion, please.
Or a presentation, actually, to add a presentation.
Mrs. Washington, if you can add Title IX presentation? Okay. Board members, please vote. Five yes, one no. The motion passes.
Dr. Scott. I would like to make a motion.
Okay, Mrs. McFadden.
I would like to make a motion to add policy BD, organization of the board, to the August 13th board meeting.
Now, Mrs. McFadden, we're going to have the policy workshop. Can that something, is that something that can be added to the workshop for policies on September 6?
Well, here, here's the concern.
Okay.
On administrative rule under this, the duties of the secretary, it says the secretary attends all board meetings and records proceedings. The secretary will also supply records and other information which the board may require or need. Among his or her duties will be the following. Keep a permanent record of all proceedings of the board. Prepare such reports and perform such duties as may be prescribed by status or direction of the chairman of the board. And the board, at its discretion, may employ a competent professional person to record minutes of proceedings. At this point, the roles that I would be performing right now would be to do all of that. And we have appointed and hired someone to do that. So, right now, I would literally be breaking a practice for the eight R's. So, if we could put that on there to change that, would be correct.
Absolutely, yes, most definitely.
Thank you.
If you could make that motion, please.
I make a motion to add policy BD and the revisions to administration rules to the August 13th board meeting.
Is there a second? Second. The motion has been made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Nash. Mrs. McFadden, please check the motion.
Yes, and to add administrative rule. Revision to the administrative rule, thank you, Ms. Agostini.
Mrs. McFadden, please check the motion. And it was made by Mrs. McFadden, seconded by Mrs. Nash. If you could correct that for me, please. Thank you. Board members, please vote. Six yes, zero no. We'll move, we don't have anyone signed up for second public participation, nor do we have to go back to executive session. So, we're going to move to 15.1 board and superintendent's comments. We'll start with Mrs. Agostini.
Enjoy the rest of summer, have a great evening.
Mrs. McFadden.
Want to say thank y'all for coming out here on a Saturday, uh, excuse me, not a Saturday. On a summer night, it shouldn't be Saturday, but on a summer night. For you guys in the audience that stayed the whole time, thank y'all for coming and listening and observing. Staff, again, thank you, look forward to seeing y'all in about three weeks.
Mrs. Porter.
Just want to say thank you for the superintendent highlights that you shared today. And kudos to all of those that are celebrating these, those end of the year awards and nominations. Also, I wanted to wish everyone, or at least I hope to see everyone at different schools that are having meet and greets in the next couple of weeks. I saw that we have quite a few scheduled with new administration at our different high schools and even elementary and maybe even a middle school. So, I hope to see you all there and give our new administrators a warm welcome. Thank you.
Mrs. Nash.
Well, one, I just want to say you all are dedicated to come here on a summer night. And so, to all of you that are in the audience and all of you watching online, thank you so much for coming and being a part of this process that we have. But enjoy your summer. I have one staycation I'm doing right now, and then next week, we're off to fun. So, hope you're doing projects, but also hoping you're having a lot of fun.
Mr. Trapp.
Yeah, I got to tell you, as I look across the room at my fellow board members, I feel a little bit like Charlton Heston in The Ten Commandments when he played Moses and the Pharaoh banished him to the desert. But nonetheless, I'm happy to be on the end. We, you know, we evaluated, or we completed our evaluation of the superintendent tonight, and I just want to say just one quick thing about that process. But I want to liken it unto the conditions in my life a lot of times. I'm a mechanical contractor, and what that basically means is I'm the guy that puts things together, that engineers, design. I'm the guy that makes, that actually does the hands-on work. Good at his craft and doesn't do his job, nothing happens. And I just, and I hope Dr. Moore can forgive me for calling her a mechanic, but I, I look at Dr. Moore as, as our mechanic. She's the one that takes the vision the board comes up with. She takes the resources that we approve, and she makes things happen. And I want her to know that I think she is the absolute best mechanic we could have. I have watched her over the last years, my privilege to work closely with her. I think she has the skills, the knowledge. She certainly has the drive and the vision to make these things happen. And I am very grateful to have her here in our school district. I think we did, did the absolute best choice. We made the best choice we could when we hired her superintendent. And I've evaluated her, and I personally think that, I just can't tell you.
Dr. Moore, can you speak after that?
Well, first off, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trapp, for those kind words. But this is a partnership, so the mechanic has to have partners in that work to do the work that we need to do. So, I appreciate that feedback and those kind words. But this is not work I do alone. I'm blessed to have great people in our district to be a part of our team that do the work every single day. And what I tell them is, you do the work and you make me look good. So, I have to say thank you to all of them that are still here tonight and those that are watching and those that are not watching. Just, I'm just very grateful, and I'm blessed to be here. And with that, I have some information to share. So, I want to remind everybody that students up to the age of 18 can eat free meals through July 26th at several Richland 2 schools at our website, which is www.richland. Receiving nutritious meals during the summer. We know that's a difficult time for a lot of our families, so please take advantage of that. Also, I want to say thank you to everyone that did summer work this past summer or during this summer, because it's not over yet. We had a great conclusion to another and final year of SOAR, which offers focused summer enrichment for our Richland 2 students. That magic continues because of the great teachers, staff members, administrators that work that program. And then, last but not least, and Miss Porter did help me pronounce this, so I'm hoping I'll get it correct. I want to extend an invitation to our Hispanic families to the Fiesta.
Conexiones.
Conexiones. I'm going to have to get back on, on July 25th at Forest Lake Elementary School from 4th to informative presentations and connect with services within the community. This is a very important event because it serves to strengthen our relationships between our families and our schools. So, please come out. There will be help with annual registration, connection to community services, vision and hearing screenings, and much, much more. So, families, please come out and take advantage of this opportunity. We want to set your students up for success for the upcoming year. And with that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just want to say congratulations on your first meeting. Successful.
Thank you, Mrs. Nash. Just want to say thank you to Mrs. Porter for bringing Isaiah here. You can, I can imagine the teachers probably really have a good time with him. It's for so much from him and learn so much. Also, I think Mr. Trapp said it for me. Dr. Moore, just want to say thank you for your wonderful first year. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to work alongside you and to learn from you as well. I'm not going to say that you are a mechanic, but I just want you to know that I really appreciate your leadership. I appreciate you pushing not only me, but the entire school board to the very next level. And I always have to practice what your, your motto is. So, board, help me, what is it?
Clarity is kindness?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Thank you so much for that. And I want to say thank you to the people who've come out here this evening. I think this is my first time maybe seeing you guys, but I want to say thank you. And please come back some more. We always want you guys to know that we work for you and we value your, your presence here and those discussions. So, thank you so much for coming out. And with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp.
I move to adjourn the July, no, we, yeah, July 9th, 2024 regular board meeting.
Is there a second?
Okay.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. McFadden. Is there any discussion? We'll take a hand vote. Six yes, zero no. The meeting is adjourned.